The January ninth, two thousand and twenty-five City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. We will begin by receiving communications from the public. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? No? Next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless the commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, consider approving the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission Special Meeting held Thursday, December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Consider approval of the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting held Thursday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. Consider approval of the Laurel Park Friendswood three final plat located at two fourteen South Friendswood Drive. And consider approval of the partial replat of Liberty Tree Estates located at four oh five West Spreading Oaks Drive and being nine point seven two five acres of land, all of Lot Two, Block One, Liberty Tree Estates, plat recorded in volume eighteen, map number thirty-seven, Gaucon County map records. And all that certain tract of land as described by deed recorded under Gaucon County Clerk File Number two zero one five zero six five seven nine seven out of the Sarah McKissick League Abstract one fifty-one, City of Friendswood, Gaucon County, Texas. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Rives? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Anderson. All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passes. Next on the agenda are our action items. According to the Planning, Zoning Rules and Procedure, all actions of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of a simple majority of the commissioners present at such commission meetings. Item A, or yeah, four A I, conduct a public hearing regarding a request for a zone classification change located at three eleven Laurel, two point two nine acres of land, more or less being part of Lot sixteen of the Harvey and Stout subdivision of Lots six, seven, and eight, Block Two, a Friendswood subdivision of Sarah McKissick or J.P. Williams League of Land, Friendswood, Gaucon County, Texas, to change from multifamily residential medium density, MFR dash M, to downtown district, DD. Aubrey, do you have the staff summary?
Yes, sir. So this property owner is requesting the change, the zoning of this property from multifamily medium density to downtown district. The downtown district boundary was established in two thousand and eight. This property is within the boundary. It's the goal eventually for all the properties within the boundary to be changed to downtown district zoning. So this is in conformance with our long-term plans.
Okay. Is the applicant present, like to speak? Anybody from the public would like to speak for this? Okay, is it Richard Wolfe? Was that? What's that?
My name is Tracy.
Okay, I got you. Okay, if you'd like to come introduce yourself?
Good evening. My name is Tracy Poty, and I reside at two one two West Willowick Avenue, which is right beside the lot that they want to put this commercial building. I am here to voice my opinion, feelings, and objections to this proposed zone change. We are extremely against this proposed change. The LLC who purchased this property knew it was a multi-dwelling property, and it should stay that way. They can still build a multi-dwelling and receive revenue from the property. There is no guarantee that the structure will have the vendor's residence in once to recoup the cost to build. This is a residential and very quiet neighborhood. The major question we have is why is this being considered when there is another commercial building within a residential neighborhood approximately a thousand feet around the corner on Willowick and five eighteen? This structure is still incomplete, has many issues, had to redo the drainage three times, just like the forty-acre property that has a halt right now, which has a three million dollar fine. During this construction process, we had our power go out, water lines off, my yard was damaged by dump trucks, delivery trucks, just on this project alone. We have endured many residential and commercial construction projects through our eighteen years of living on that street and that home. Another issue we have is why would our home will be the only single dwelling property beside the downtown district, the only single dwelling? And I've gauged this. We have lived in our home, as I said, for eighteen years, and ceiling, and also, selling will peel or is going to diminish. Me trying to sell my home, it's going to lower my property in value. It may increase some, but it's going to be very hard for me to sell if I choose to sell. We do not want to sell. My question to you always, why is the city not focusing on the commercial buildings that are under construction right now, and instead of trying to construct another commercial building that we really don't need? There's a lot of vacant spaces around here. Not only that, this builder has also lots on Shadow Bend, Cold, and Dawn Drive that are vacant, that have not even structured anything yet. Over two years, they've lots been left. Why can't they finish that? Here are the issues we also have. Construction's going to be awful. The sewer lines, there's issues right now with the sewer lines. They're always continually backed up. People run the stop sign on the corner of Willowick. Streets are minimal. There's sex offenders point three miles away, three of them, one one point one five. Again, I want to stress that why do we need another building? I also want to say that the drawing submitted to y'all is inaccurate. My property is in this diagram. My garage, my property line, this is not correct. So these documents submitted to you is inaccurate. Therefore, again, I like to stress, I am not happy about this. I have already reached out to this press, the news stations, my attorney, lobbyists, we will fight. And if you guys do decide to pass this, if so much is a nail or blade of grass is destroyed on my property, we will put injunctions, and we will do something legally, and I will follow, I have rights, and I know what my rights are. I'm a paralegal for the real estate, and I worked one of the top real estate title people in the United States. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Richard Wolfe?
My name is Richard Wolfe, and I'm here to speak against this change. First of all, there is no information at all about what the intent is to be done with this property. Therefore, we have no way, and you have no way, of knowing what they plan on doing. Second, the, there's no information about what is going to be done about parking and traffic on the road. They are both going to be, and continue to be, a problem unless it's being addressed. There is nothing information about whether there's public walkways next to the property. So that has not been addressed. The other thing is, there's no, there's nothing, there's no information that I know, that I know, that you may have been given, about flooding and drainage. That needs to be addressed. Without any information, I do not understand how the zoning board can approve this change. If there is information, then share it with the public, and the public would respond. Finally, I've often heard it said that this would increase the property values and increase tax revenue base. I see no evidence of that. The other properties on Shadow Bend that are nearby have a higher property tax per acre than other buildings on the main street of Friendswood. So if you look at that, it doesn't even appear that it's going to be beneficial to the city than having a house, a single house built there. So I consider, considering all that, I think you should reconsider and not do anything with this request until more information is available and a lot more information is known. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at this time? No? All right, next, consider making a recommendation to City Council for the requested zone classification change at three eleven Laurel. We'll start with discussion. Start with Commissioner Anderson. Okay, no problem. Commissioner Rives?
This, this lot's in an area that the city has deemed to be part of the downtown district for many years now. And over the years, that street in particular has gone from residential to commercial. Some of the houses, even the gardening club, you know, that was residential at one point. I know from the city's land use maps and everything else, we would like to expand our downtown and, but keep it pedestrian-friendly and walkable, and as the downtown district zoning, that has restrictions in it to help keep things on a more personal level. It does require things that you guys are missing, like sidewalk requirements, parking requirements, drainage. We, we can't really address those items until we get site plans, and then they have to comply with all the city codes and ordinances, as well as the drainage district and other entities. So right now, just changing it from multifamily residential to downtown district fits within all the city's criteria, which is what we are up here about, looking at the rules, looking at the ordinances. I've said this before, and I don't think I've ever said it from up here, but we're here to kind of interpret the rules and regulations of the city, and whatever even we feel personally shouldn't come into play with that. But if you have personal grievances, you're more than welcome to talk to City Council. Throwing Trish under the bus there. But that, that's our, our use, is we're here to just look at the codes and ordinances, basically. So just wanted to let everybody know that, that there's nothing, shouldn't be anything personal going on up here, but that's what we have to look at.
Commissioner Conrad?
I agree with everything he's saying. This is mainly a request zone to go from residential to the downtown district, which was passed in two thousand and eight. That section to be part of the downtown district. Like I said, it's solely a request to change the classification of zoning. Past that, we have to go through a lot of the drainage, check, approve the site plan, so many things that have to happen, but it's mainly a classification change. Like he said, you know, we are just here to interpret the bylaws and everything that has, that's gotten, gotten this property in the downtown district.
Commissioner Man?
Yeah, and I, and I agree with Commissioner Rives. So, so transitioning it to downtown district, I think will alleviate a lot of your concerns once the plat comes out. The parking, drainage district, all those things still have to comply, and certainly no property damage to anybody else's property is, is being voted on or authorized or even condoned in any way. So that is definitely not part of this. This right now is going to the downtown district from, from the single-family residence multiple, but just to be sure that that's what we're doing now, and that there still is a lot of work to be done before anything's built there. Right now, this is just the zoning change. That's it.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aubrey, was there anything additional that, because right now, we don't have a lot of information to look at. That's going to come later, right?
Yes, sir.
So the detailed review of these issues as far as drainage and parking and, and all those other things that came up, not everything, but most of them would be addressed at a later time?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, to repeat some of the things that have been said, you know, this is just the zone change to put it in the downtown district. It is not, there's no plot plan at this time, there's no, we're not approving a design, we're not approving anything such as that. Before that would come to us, it'll go through flood control, it'll go through the fire department, and there's, there's several steps before we'll see this again. In addition to that, we're just making a recommendation to City Council. The next step would be, it would come in front of City Council, so that would be if you have additional opinions on it, that'd be your next step, okay? Okay?
You tell us when the City Council meeting will be?
February third.
Okay.
Sir, do you have to approve this change?
No, sir, but we're beyond the public comment period, okay? Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
Commissioner Rives, Commissioner Conrad? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passes. Okay, item B, consider approving the Wild Pines preliminary plat, eleven point one three five acres of land being all of a called eleven point one three five acre tract as described by deed recorded under GCCF number two zero two zero zero six seven zero four five, and being all of Lot fourteen, Einar Hordell's subdivision plat record twelve, map number nine, GCMR, Sarah McKissick League, A dash one five one, BBB, and CRR, County Survey, Section three, A forty-six, City of Friendswood, Gaucon County, Texas, located generally at four hundred fence posts. Aubrey, you have the staff summary?
Yes, sir. So this is a residential plat that's going to create two residential lots. This original eleven point one three five acres has been in this configuration since nineteen ten. That Einar Hordell subdivision plat was an original from nineteen ten. So subdividing that, both of the lots will have access from Fence Post Road. They will be required to extend water, and they are going to do septic for sewer, and then the cul-de-sac will provide the required fire truck turnaround for safety purposes. The property is zone, single-family residential, and the lot dimensions exceed the requirements of that zoning district. This plat was required or reviewed by all the staff and recommending approval.
Okay. Is the applicant here, and would they like to speak?
I'm the property owner.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Christian Hoffmer. I was the applicant that prepared the plat.
Very good.
For the owner, Mr. Smith. And it's basically just, like she said, two lots out of one. Large residential lots with a cul-de-sac.
Okay. You're welcome to sit or stand for any other questions that might come up.
Sure.
Okay. Next, we'll move to discussion, and start with Commissioner Anderson.
Everything I looked, it looked pretty clear.
Commissioner Man?
Just the one question, the cul-de-sac for the fire truck turnaround is enough for both lots that counts, because it touches both lots? That was the only question.
Commissioner Conrad?
No questions.
Commissioner Rives?
No, everything looks good.
No other questions for me?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Man, and Commissioner Rives. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passes. Okay, item C, consider approving the site plan for APA Designs to be located at four oh five Laurel, Friendswood, Gaucon County, Texas. Aubrey, you got staff summary?
Yes. So this, there was a previous building on this property at four oh five Laurel. That previous building has been removed from the property and everything demolished. So they're planning to construct a new building of fourteen hundred and eighty-nine square feet for APA Designs, which is a floral shop, and then nine hundred and eighty-nine square feet of that will be for a wine bar. This property is point one six acres, so it's a pretty small lot. So due to the small footprint of the property, some of our design modifications that are in the zoning ordinance that are intended to help some of these downtown district lots that are really small redevelop, have, we've had to apply some of those principles. So one of those is the parking. Because of the small footprint, and the downtown district does allow for head-in parking, as long as it's not on South Friendswood Drive and seventy feet, seventy-five feet off of South Friendswood Drive. So with this being a side street, they're a good candidate for the on-street parking. So they are proposing six, the six parking spaces that are, that are going to serve this property will be head-in on-street parking. They do overlap into the right-of-way a bit, so there is going to be a license agreement that's going to be required for use of the right-of-way that council will have to approve. In addition to that, the proposed uses would require fifteen parking spaces. So nine of the parking spaces are going to be proposed to be off-site at the other property that we did the zone change for. Nine, and the downtown district allows for shared parking as long as it's within twelve hundred feet, and with a written agreement between the owners. So though, they have a drafted agreement, so the motion tonight needs to include a provision that the license agreement and the shared parking agreement would be executed before the certificate of occupancy is issued for the buildings. We can work through those, getting those recorded and agreed upon by City Council while the building is under construction, but they will need to be executed prior to issuance of the CO.
Okay.
As part of the design, also, to make the property, make the shared parking viable, with the residential properties that are between these two developments, they're proposing to put, and it was at staff suggestion, to put the six-foot sidewalk that's required on the opposite side of Laurel. So there would be a six-foot sidewalk on the school district side of the property for the, for people to be able to walk between the developments, once the other property's developed as well. The other item that's going to require your approval is the land, alternate landscaping plan. They are proposing to keep a thirty-six foot, or thirty-six inch, existing oak tree on the property. The thirty-six inches of that tree exceeds, because it's only point one six acres, exceeds the requirement of the new trees that would be required. They are still adding some other landscaping to the property, but the biggest thing is to keep that large oak tree on the property. They are going to keep it and protect it. And I think that's about it.
Okay. Next, we'll move to, is the applicant here, would they like to speak? Okay, thank you. Next, discussion.
Are we allowed to speak?
Not on the subject, ma'am, sorry.
No, I'm stuck?
No. Are they? Okay. Okay, next discussion, start with, there's no public comment period?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Rives?
This property is pretty much what the downtown district has always wanted, as far as small pieces of property being developed. Since two thousand and eight or before, they knew that that was going to be a challenge with narrow properties. The, the parking, the landscape, all the stuff we're talking about tonight is probably going to happen, and has happened on many of these lots, if not all of them. I know personally the parking, head-in parking, I've parked right next door at the adjacent building several times, and they're head-in parking. It's not the first one to do that. Doesn't stick out in the street. Everything seems to be in compliance with what we want for the downtown district. And then the sidewalk, after driving by and looking at that, I think it's a much better use to put the sidewalk across the street than trying to eat up the front yards of the houses and the residential and the commercial that's there. Plus, it gives all that sidewalk parking to the parking lot for the junior high. So these guys are footing the bill for a pretty long sidewalk that wouldn't be there for years and years and years. So kudos for that. It all looks good to me. I don't see anything that's, that jumps out at me as being detrimental to anybody nearby.
Okay. Commissioner Conrad?
I'm in agreement with it. It all, it all looks really good. The compliance, everything that I checked, looks really good. I don't see anything that I would change on it. That sidewalk, number one, looks really good. I think it's going to be very beneficial.
Commissioner Man?
And I might have missed it. How long, how far does that sidewalk go down on the other side of it?
Do you have that measurement, Troy?
If you can go, sir, if you can come up and just go ahead and introduce yourself real quick.
Troy Kennedy, Kennedy Architecture. I believe it's, I'm just going off memory, eight hundred feet, something in that range is the length.
I'm going to have another question for you in a minute, so you might as well.
Okay.
Okay, that was one question, and the other part, I just wanted to comment, is I'm really happy with the oak tree and keeping that big one. Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, the canopy actually extends nearly to the other side of the property, so, and it sets up real well for that building. We shouldn't have to trim it, really, we'll be able to protect it, so it's all going to be part of the design.
And then consideration two, I know that those oaks have really shallow roots, so any parking that goes up close to it or something, but the fact that you want to keep that makes me trust that you're going to take care of that.
Yeah, for sure.
It's three hundred and eighty feet.
Yeah. That's close.
Commissioner Anderson?
Just one question about the shared parking. Will the, is the consideration of ours pretty much the same for both businesses, or will it be all the staggered?
There is some serendipity there. So like the wine bar being, operating at night, you know, whereas the proposed uses elsewhere would be primarily daytime. So we consider that in our calculations, I believe. We did talk about that, so.
Just a couple of questions on the oak tree. Are there concerns, or have you consulted on the potential that the root system or anything could be damaged during construction?
We use an arborist regularly on projects. He's looked at it. I will say that the position of the oak tree now is right against a neighboring parking lot, and so has not been detrimental. That concrete's been there forever. I don't think we're making it, we have like one spot that I think we'll get into that root zone a little bit, but the arborist hadn't looked at it and had no concerns with that, so, yeah.
I just, I just want to make sure there's extra care given to that?
Yeah.
What about a dumpster? Is there a dumpster?
No, it's, it's not a, the use doesn't really warrant a dumpster. They would never get it filled, you know, it'd be like once a month, so we're going to be relying on cans. We do have a screen that, where you wouldn't see them, and they'll drag them out, so.
Okay, that's good. Appreciate it, sir. And just to clarify on something that you just asked, you can sit down. But just keep in mind that we're not necessarily voting on the businesses that are going into these. The businesses could change down the, down the road. We're voting on the plan for the building that would be built for this, so. And I just wanted to take a moment for you two. I wasn't trying to be rude and not letting you speak, it's just rules of procedure does not allow for public comment at that time, okay? Sorry. I just wanted to apologize to you. Okay, so we have a, we have discussion? Do we have a motion? Remember, the motion needs additional comments added.
I'll make the motion to approve with staff comments, and I need to be any more detailed than that?
Just staff comments, and I'll include them.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Rives and Commissioner Anderson. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passes. Okay, next on our agenda is communications, and we'll start with item A, receive information concerning the City Council's January sixth discussion of possible amendments to the Friendswood City Code concerning appeals to the City Council. Reconsiderations of ideas. Friendswood City Code concerning appeals to the City Council. Reconsiderations of items and/or regulations regarding landscaping and screening requirements. Aubrey.
So there was an item on council's agenda Monday night. So we just wanted to keep you all in the loop. It affects the Planning and Zoning Commission somewhat. So the City Council was having a discussion about the possibility of appealing decisions made by non-advisory boards, such as Planning and Zoning Commission, Construction Board of Adjustment, Zoning Board of Adjustment, Charter, the Charter Group.
ZBOA.
And ZBOA. So there are certain decisions made by, like, for instance, the Zoning Board of Adjustment. That's a quasi judicial board. And so once their decisions are made, they're only appealable through the court system. So we did some benchmarking of other cities, all the other cities in Galveston County, and then some other cities around the state of Texas. Predominantly, there is not an appeals process of the commission to City Council. Typically, how we've handled those situations in the past is if there is, you know, concern or, you know, something, typically, we push to change the ordinance, to change the requirement for everyone, instead of City Council being put in that position to make, you know, individual decisions and considerations. So I think overall, the council decided to not make any changes at this point and keep the process how it has been. So there was a couple of topics that brought this, this discussion up. So we may be bringing an ordinance back to you all to give you a little more, it was a landscaping issue. And so we may be bringing an ordinance back to you all to give you a little more latitude to possibly consider a site plan amendment for one particular applicant. But other than that, things are going to remain as is and all is good.
Okay. Trish, do you want to add anything to that or?
Well, I think she said it very well. Basically, we did end up deciding that, that we would keep things as they are. And we had a, a group of citizens that came and spoke to us about an ordinance existing with an existing business. And there had been some council members approached by other people. And I know, and I think other people know as well, that as, as hard as you try to write an ordinance or a law or anything else to be applicable to everyone, sometimes there are things that don't make sense, or they were written a long time ago, or there might be some exceptions. So that whole discussion then centered on how do we handle those things? So it was decided that people could come during the audience portion and voice that concern if they have it. And if council then feels that that's something that we would like P and Z to review, or that we'd like to, to consider revisions to the ordinance, that then we could make that decision or put it on a, a next, you know, another council meeting for more discussion. So I think it was a good discussion. We, you know, and I can, I think I can say this for all the council members, we want to be receptive. You know, we were elected to represent people and to listen to them. And so we feel a responsibility to make sure that we are. But at the same time, we know that you guys do all the work, you know, with the studying and listening. And so that's why we want it really to work together. So we didn't make any changes, but said, this is the process. You come during the audience portion, you present it. And then if council members feel that it is something we need to look further into, we will, or send it back to P and C for reconsideration or rewriting of a, of an ordinance. Do you think I got that right? Okay. That pretty much sums up my report tonight, too, about council that has anything to do with P and Z. So that'll be great.
Thank you, Trish.
Any questions?
No, ma'am.
Thanks, Trish.
The only, the only thing I'll add to that is just that we've got a lot of non-conforming lots, harder developed, harder to develop lots coming up. So you'll probably see more of these items. And I think what Aubrey's referring to is that with, with certain changes, you'll be able to have a little bit of latitude with that, with certain items, as opposed to sticking directly to exactly what's in the, the ordinances. So. Any other comments, Aubrey? That good?
Not on that item, no.
Item B, announcement of the next Planning and Zoning Commission regular meetings scheduled for Thursday, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and Thursday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Item C, receive the December DRC, or December twenty twenty-four DRC report. It's in your backup material, but Aubrey, do you have anything you want to mention?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. We've gotten our City Council update. Thank you, Trish. We'll get, continue with communications and commissioners. And we'll start with, let Commissioner Mann go first.
Nothing to add. Just happy to be here. Thank you. Thanks for the staff, all your work.
Commissioner Conrad.
I don't have anything to add, but I do want to thank everyone that came here. This is what makes the, the meetings interesting and we learn from you. So thank you.
And Commissioner Rives.
Same thing she said, but also you guys are welcome to talk to us individually as well. If you have more questions, if you want to understand a little bit more about what goes on, who does what, happy to talk to you.
Individually, we can't all get together.
Right.
Commissioner Anderson.
I'll just echo the comments made earlier. Really appreciate the insights from the community. It really helps to ensure that we're staying focused and aware of all the issues that people concern about. Thank you.
Okay. And myself, I'll echo what Commissioner Rives, I'd be, I'd be happy to discuss it with y'all for a few minutes afterwards. Just, as I mentioned, it's just by procedure, there wasn't a public comment period during those periods. But also, just so you know, too, that like we mentioned, that's a, it's just a referral to, to a City Council. It's not necessarily an approved change at this point. Okay? We'll move to staff comments. Aubrey.
I just had one other follow-up to the City Council meeting on Monday night. There was several comments about special events and food trucks. So if y'all get time to go back and watch the public comments from City Council meeting Monday night, we are in the process of rewriting that section of the zoning ordinance that regulates special events. And so it might be good to have that in your back pocket, you know, just for historical purposes for when we consider that ordinance.
Yeah. Becky? Karen? Okay. With that, thank you, everyone, for attending this evening. The January ninth, twenty twenty-five Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned.